Hello, and welcome to Candidates Night 2018 sponsored by the Close Up Club. My name is Jacob Serrano and I will be the moderator for tonight's debate. Joining us this evening are candidates for the Lacy Township Board of Education. We welcome Amanda Biron, Regina De Senza, Robert Claus, Gregory Panza, and David Seletti. Frank Horvath was unable to join us tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. Representatives from the Close Up Club will be asking questions this evening. We welcome Dominic Bushko, John Hamm, Cody Carpenter, and Trey Kennas. We'll start tonight's debate with opening statements. Candidates will give statements and answer questions in a pre-selected, random order set by the WLTS students earlier this evening. You will have three minutes for your opening statements. Mr. Panza, your opening statement, please.
First of all, I'd like to just, I'll keep it short and sweet. I want to thank the Close Up Club and the rest of the candidates for being here this evening, and this is a great opportunity to afford the residents the time to hear where all of us want to approach the issues in reference to the school, both with education as well as security and other topics. So, once again, this is a great night and very appreciative to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Biron, your opening statement, please.
Yes, I would also like to thank everyone for being here tonight and also having me, and I did want to make a quick statement that Mr. Horvath, my running mate, does apologize he could not be here. This is very important to him, and he is willing to answer any questions anyone has for him. I can pass along his information. So, for my statement, I've lived in the town for 20 years and have had five children go through the school system. I'm extremely upset by what I've been seeing with the decline of the legacy and the pride being pushed to the wayside, and I think it's time for some new blood. I think it's time to really buckle down and really start advocating for our entire community, and I wish all the candidates the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claus, your opening statement, please.
Yes, alright. Thank you very much, Close Up and WLTS and the administration here at Lacy for putting this event together. We appreciate the time that you guys have organized for us to have this conversation. For my opening comments, I thought I'd take a second to kind of give a definition of what the Board of Education is. I went on the NJ SBA website and I found a, you know, they had a pretty big QA section. So, Board of Education adopts policies under which the school district operates, oversees the budget, approves curriculum, hires and evaluates the superintendent, represents the public during contract negotiation, and serves communications link between the community and the school system. Actions or promises or commitments made by individual board members are without legal basis and have no binding commitment upon the district. School board members have no individual authority aside from the results of participation and decisions of the board during an official meeting. Board members should be aware that they are elected to represent the entire district in all matters pertaining to the education. The function of the school board is to not run the schools but to see that they are run effectively. That one's, I think, a real important one for new folks when they get on the board. The superintendent is accountable to the board and all other staff and members are accountable to the superintendent. Decision-making authority is vested on the board and not on individual members. Why do I say this? Because over the past three years, I've learned firsthand with my running mate, Dave Seletti, what the responsibilities of a board member are. We've learned the chain of command, and we've learned it's not our job to run day-to-day operations. You could get too involved and it could take forever and you're really out of place at that point. It's left to the super and the team, the administration team underneath the super to run the schools. I'd say, keep an eye out for candidates that come and make promises, come and make demands with their own individual agendas. The board's role is to help steer the district in the direction that's beneficial for all the students and the schools and the taxpayers as a whole. It's not to satisfy the goals of a particular group or a segment of followers that are behind them. Lacy is lucky right now, I believe, to have a Board of Education that truly makes decisions without a personal agenda and in what we believe is the best interest for the whole town. Dave and I, we only have one agenda, I would say, and that is what's best for the schools and what's best for the town. We humbly ask for your vote on November 6th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Seletti, your opening statement, please.
Thank you very much, and I will follow suit here. I just want to say thank you again to the Close Up Club for having this, you know, I'm sure everyone will say it. It's a very nice night. It's great to get to meet everybody. It's great for the people at home watching and the people in the building. Just a little bit about myself, I am David Seletti. I am running for reelection to the Lacy Township Board of Education. I served for the last three years here on the Board of Ed. It was a great privilege and honor to be a part of the Board of Education. There's a lot of work involved in being a board member, many meetings, sometimes contentious board meetings here in public, but like I said, it's an honor. It's an honor to serve. It's an honor to help steer the ship, like my running mate, Rob Claus, had just mentioned. You know, steering this district. We have meetings monthly, people come, represent two different sides of what everybody wants here, and we try to, we try to stay in the middle of that. And what I mean by that is, there's people here that want just nothing but tax cuts and budget cuts, and then there's people that want people to get paid and teachers to get raises, and those are just some of the things that we have to deal with on the Board of Ed. I won't bore you with the details, but it's not easy. It's not easy to stay in the middle. And, other than that, a little bit about myself, I am a firefighter in North Jersey. I chose to live in Lacy Township over any other town in the state I could have lived in. I travel 75 miles to work, but I drive 75 miles to come home here, and that's where I, I chose to live. I love this township. I love serving on the Board of Education. I love serving the people of this town. A little bit about myself, I have a bachelor's degree from marketing, Central Connecticut State University in New Britain, Connecticut. I was a small business owner for 10 years before I joined the fire service, and I just feel, with the three years' experience that I have on the board with my running mate, Rob Claus, I would like to say that we know everything, but we don't. We're still learning. Everybody here, I believe, if they were given the opportunity, they would realize that it's not exactly what you think it is. It is a lot of hard work. There's a lot of decisions that have to be made, and it affects everybody. It affects the entire town. With that being said, like I said, it is a privilege and an honor, and get out on November 6th and vote. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. De Senza, your opening statement, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much to the Close Up Club for this opportunity. I think this is debate number 11 for me. I've been at this for quite a while. This is tradition. School board member is a very demanding job, and most people that do it take too much for granted. And one thing you really need to do is just show up. Proper district oversight is needed, and you can't do it if you're not there. During my previous term, 2015 to 2017, I made every effort to attend all 36 board meetings. I currently have over 48 months' perfect attendance at board meetings. I attended over 300 student events, concerts, proms, and parent gatherings at all six schools. Student achievement is job one, and I loved every minute of witnessing all the students' various achievements. The residents of this town and the school district need to take a very serious interest in what goes on in Trenton. There is a direct effect on our school budget. In my opinion, I think a meeting with the governor is in order, soon. Start at the top when there is a problem. State funding cuts must be stopped. If people think the budget is tight now, just wait for the rest of Phil Murphy's cuts. I was a state delegate for three years that I was on the board. Now, here's the math of it all. The current school budget started out in May 2018 at $76.6 million. Then Governor Phil asked for $583,000 to be returned, leaving approximately 76.1. The health benefit costs did not rise the full budgeted amount, so the district was able to chop the $583,000 directly out of the employee benefits line item, leaving the remainder of the school budget intact. However, that Band-Aid cannot be reused again when next year's cuts come from Trenton. Next, approximately $30 million is for salaries, leaving $46 million. The line item for benefits is approximately $18 million, so now the budget is left with approximately $26 million. There is a line item called unallocated employee benefits. This is the money set aside for all unused sick and vacation pay, which shows on page 99 of the 2016-17 CAFR at $17.8 million. Subtract this figure, and the Lacy School District is now left operating seven buildings with just about $8 million, 3.7 of which is earmarked for debt, a four-letter word that is killing this district. Debt for a solar project that deceived the taxpayers and in turn short-changed the staff and the students for another 10 years. This project has never paid for itself, as was promised, and is constantly being supplemented with tax funds never meant for the bond. Vote for the fiscal watchdog. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to the question and answer phase. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question, and will be allowed one minute of extra rebuttal time, up to three times during this portion of the debate. Dominic Bushko will ask the first question.
Hello, Board of Education. I am Dominic Bushko. My question is, Lacy Township High School students have received only 30 minutes a day for lunchtime, and they have also noticed that cafeteria employees are waning thin. This has resulted in, this has resulted in longer lines and a longer wait time to get the lunch. If you are elected as a Board of Education member, what will you do to administer to these problems?
Mr. Panza.
That's a good question, and unfortunately, this is the result of financial irresponsibility. We're spending money, as one of the other candidates mentioned, on, on the solar panels. We're not reaping any benefits from that whatsoever, and now we have an undersh shortage of staff, which is causing you to be delayed in your lunchtime, okay? I'd like to, I know that the teachers are negotiating their contract right now, and the lunch staff, so if there's wiggle room to get some more staff to assist you in getting your lunch in an expeditious manner, then I would be apt to looking into that. Thank you.
Mrs. Biron.
Thank you for your question. It's very interesting. One of my running mate and I's main priorities, if elected, is transparency and accountability. And the fact that you're raising this question, and it's the first time that I've heard an issue, you know, I feel like there might be some disconnect right now. And I think through social media and other kinds of platforms, we can ask for more of the students and the parents and the taxpayers' issues so that we can try and evaluate everything and put them in an order. In addition to that, I'd also like to say that because of the tax cuts and also the pilot program in our town, where the township committee allowed a discount to the developers, and they've built the apartment complexes over by the recycling building, all of those taxes that those people pay, nothing goes to the school board. Nothing. Not one penny. So, the taxpayers of the town are left taking the burden for that project as well, in addition to the failed solar panel project. If elected, my running mate and I will do a full, comprehensive review of all the administration in the town and try to see where we can consolidate things and eliminate reductions in order to keep spending low, to put money in places like you're asking. Thank you.
Mr. Claus.
Thank you. Thank you, Dominic. It's a good question, too, actually. I apologize that it's like that. I know what lunch means to me. You know, you need to eat, you need to have some downtime and spend some time with your friends and whatnot, so standing in line is not the, I guess, the optimal thing to do. The problem that we had was, three years ago, when I came onto the board, we found out that we were running the Board of Education P&amp;L, the section in the budget, I mean, not the Board of Education, the cafeteria P&amp;L, section of the budget for cafeteria at a $400,000 negative. What I learned was legally, you're not allowed to be negative in a cafeteria P&amp;L. So, what we ended up having to do was, we had a vote, I think I was the only one that voted no, but they had talked about privatizing the cafeteria. This is where the problem started. We were already overspent in cafeteria. So, instead of privatizing and outsourcing it to someone else, we decided we're going to stick around, we're going to try to fix it ourselves, and the goal there was to turn that 400 grand negative into a positive. If I've got it correct, I think as, as the last time I asked, we were, we've gone from 300 negative to just $100,000 negative, so we've been able to come back by 300 grand, which is huge. We still have more work to do, we just talked about it last week. The goal, like I said, is to, to turn that cafeteria into a money-making restaurant sort of thing. This will give us more opportunity to hire more people. This will give us more opportunity to provide more options for food and whatnot, but I'm glad you brought it up. I will bring it up to the folks in the administration and find out where we are with that and how we can go about maybe, I don't know, adding another lunch line or something, something to help you guys get your lunch quicker. We should do it fast, so.
Mr. Seletti.
Dominic, thank you for your question. It's a very good question. And just echoing on my running mate, Rob Claus, when we were elected three years ago, this was brought to our attention, the cafeteria, the lack of income generation that the cafeteria had going on, and they threw a lot of ideas around, and one of the ideas, like he said, was privatization. Now, privatization would mean we would hire someone to come in and run our service, and what would happen essentially was, they would let, they would let everyone go that worked in this district, and we were dead-set against that. We were dead-set against getting rid of the people that work in this town or from this town, work in our schools, that everyone's familiar with. You see the same lunch lady every day, right? See the same people every day. You're happy to see them. This would have been heartbreaking for us to have that happen. So, we searched for ideas, we searched for things to do, and, and one of them was to try and run our cafeteria system like a private system, where we brought in a director to oversee the operations and try to get the numbers down, and try to provide a good lunch for you guys, a good service. And I understand, I want to step away from this question for a second, I just want to let you know that even at your age, if you have a concern, all of the candidates, not the candidates, all of the Board of Education members have an email address. It's on our website. You could reach out to us. You could reach out and say, hey, there's this issue going on, and you know what? As trivial as it may seem to you, it isn't to us. Anything that's bothering our students or affecting the student population, we want to know about. We want to know. My email address, dsaletti@lacyschools.org. Our clause, at lacyschools.org. You can reach out to us for anything, and if we can't give you an answer, we'll try and find it and we'll try and get you the answer. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Ms. De Senza.
Thank you. Unfortunately, when I got on the board four years ago, the cafe services had been a problem for a while, a big financial problem, as Mr. Claus mentioned. A free, appropriate public education does not include food services, so when we found out we were operating in the red, we had to do whatever was necessary to bring this department back into the black, and it's still not there yet, and the state is breathing down our neck. So, doing this has probably short-changed the students. I hope the two gentlemen that are still on the board will look into this. The alternative is very unpleasant, as Mr. Seletti mentioned. The alternative would be outsourcing this entire department. Sometimes an outside company will take the current employees, and sometimes they won't. They bring in their own people, they bring in their own food, and it may not always be the best thing. I think we have a lot of familiarity here with the lunch ladies, and I'd hate to see that be outsourced, but we have to do what we can to cut back because, as I mentioned in my opening statement, the budget is very tight. I mean, we need electricity, we need internet service, we have to pay contracts now for textbooks online. Every single thing the students use has to be paid for, and with barely $4.3 million out of the eight that's left. Those are very real numbers. These are the comprehensive annual financial reports right here. They are published online at the Department of Education's website. This is reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Cody Carpenter will ask the second question.
Hello, Board of Ed candidates. My name's Cody Carpenter. I've lived in this town and been a student here for over 10 years. The question I want to ask you is relating to zero tolerance policies, and they're a part of the discipline code in every high school, including ours. Lacy Township students have noticed some high-profile cases in the past few years relating to the zero tolerance policies. As Board of Ed member, how do you feel zero tolerance policies and their place have, have a place in public school environments?
Mr. Panza.
Well, we need to make sure that our schools and students are safe, so by setting the tone with a zero tolerance policy, any infraction would be addressed appropriately, and the more major infractions would be addressed appropriately, and this would allow, obviously, for a safer school environment. So, in that case, I would support having a zero tolerance policy in place, obviously, as you guys have now. One of my main issues is school safety and security, and I have two kids in the Lacy Township schools right now, and I want to make sure that they're safe, as well as you guys sitting on the panel there, and give you every opportunity to be safe and receive a safe education. Thank you.
Mrs. Biron.
Thank you for that question. That question happens to be near and dear to my heart, as I'm one of the people who brought some of those issues to light. And my running mate and I feel very strongly about advocating for the parents and the teachers and the students for their civil rights and their safety. And it has actually come to my attention over this past week that there are some issues with some special needs children in the high school that need to be addressed because zero tolerance policy is not being implemented. So, I'm not even going to wait until, if I'm elected, to start doing something. I will be doing something about it this week and helping those parents of those children and advocating for them through the community. I happen to think that some of the issues in the past violated students' rights. I am all for, if, if somebody does something that alerts somebody else or scares somebody else, if a police investigation is done and there's no threat, then I do not feel that that student should be punished. There are more cases that you may or may not have heard of that also have not come out and will be coming out very shortly with some very heavy presence to try and get those students who have already been reprimanded some justice for things that maybe were not such wrongdoings. It might not have been the smartest idea, but it's, it's not a threat to your safety or anyone else in the room, so that's one thing that we will absolutely be focusing on. Thank you.
Mr. Claus.
Thank you, Cody. Turn my mic on. So, zero tolerance, it's a slippery slope, you know? I am for it, I'll say, to start with. Unfortunately, it's something that we have to deal with. There's extenuating circumstances to every situation that happens, but you can't always make exceptions. You have to follow the rules. Rules are there for a reason, and you follow them to keep the ship in line, I suppose. There's been a lot of high-profile cases in the news, you know, over the past bunch of years, you know, since I was younger, too, actually, but the only way to really try to prevent those is to keep everything running tight and neat, and there are certain circumstances that need to be dealt with and need to have the zero tolerance. It kind of is what it is. There are a lot of times we want to look away the other way, but you really can't. And as far as when, by the time it gets to the Board of Education, things have already happened, there's already process in motion, the bell's already been rung, you can't unring it, so now we need to find out how do we deal with it. So, sometimes we don't disagree with the, the response that was made. Sometimes we don't like the response that, that was made, but sometimes it just is what it is, and you have to follow through. So, like I said, I, I agree with zero tolerance, try not to use it, but it is what it is, I guess. Thank you.
Mr. Seletti.
Thank you. And thank you, Cody, for the question. Zero tolerance, when we talk about zero tolerance policy, I am the chairperson of policy. You're talking about zero tolerance on certain issues, certain issues only, mostly violence, drug-related, weapon-related. These are things that, we can't ever know the intentions of somebody. So, if they're caught in the school with a knife in their bag, and they tell us they only had it because they needed to cut an apple at lunch, it doesn't matter. The policy was written, you can't have the, the knife in school. We don't know the intentions. That could have been a great cover-up for something he may have, or she may have been planning on using for. Stuff comes across the board every year where violence and weapons are, are in question, and for us to try and decipher if that knife in the bag was for the apple or for someone that person didn't like, that's not, that's not up to us to decide. You can't have a knife in the school. You can't have a weapon in the school. You can't have drugs in the school. That's just the way it is. And the zero tolerance policy may, it may come with its own set of circumstances. If you come with drugs and you have a certain amount of drugs on you, and they may say your intent is to distribute in the policy, and this is why we have school resource officers now, it's to do the investigation on that, but once, like my candidate, my running mate, Rob Claus, said, you can't unring the bell once you ring it. So, if you showed up with a weapon, and we've had multiple cases over the last three years, weapons, drugs, unfortunately, it happens, you have to be dealt with. You have to be dealt with. I think everybody's given their freshman year the rules and regulations and the policies of the school when it concerns those things. If you try and skirt that issue when you're caught, you have to pay the consequences. That's just the way it is. Thank you.
Ms. De Senza.
Thank you. Zero tolerance policies are unfortunately necessary, and yes, we sat through some very unpleasant cases between 2015 and 2017, but I have to say, I'm in favor of all zero tolerance policy. I attended junior and senior proms and various dances where we had to use the new breathalyzers. We have to keep everyone safe. It is our obligation as a school district to keep all students safe, especially on and off student grounds. All venues, zero tolerance. It's not pleasant to have to hear these cases. I read all the policy. It is published for public reference on the school's website. In fact, it was posted at my request five years ago, prior to my term on the board. If anyone can't find it, just ask for help, but it's under Board of Education. Policy is there for all to see, and you can search it very easily to find whatever topic you're looking for.
Mrs. Biron.
Yes, I would just like to add that, you know, some of these issues, such as having something physically on you in school, I mean, there's no question there, the zero tolerance policy needs to be enacted, but then there's some other gray areas, sort of say, if it's social media and it happens outside of school. And in those cases, I think we really need to look at if the students' rights are being violated or not for First or Second Amendment. or Second Amendment. In addition to that, with the new HIB policy, I think that needs to be looked at and that also needs to be enacted. And I think that's also part of zero tolerance, which is not happening to the fullest degree right now. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, John Hamm will ask the third question.
Hello, thank you. I'm John Hamm. I'm a senior here at Lacy High. I've been a part of the school system since first grade. And based on current trends and thinkings in public education today, if you are selected for the Board of Education, what school programs will you either emphasize or introduce during your term as a board member?
Mr. Panza.
That's a good question, John. I'd like to see more hands-on programs be reintroduced into the high schools. Back when I was in high school, we were doing wood shop. There was metal shop. Things that, kids that might not be interested in, like college, pick up a trade and learn a trade and be an asset to the community and productive in the community that way. Technology, technology-based classes would also be something that I'd like to see more emphasized in school. I know that the Board has implemented the program where you can get your college credits towards the end of your high school education and start your college, gaining your college credits that way. So these are programs that I would like to see. I will support you guys on that one. That was a good, thank you, good move on your parts. Give credit where credit's due. And that's a great program for the students here at Lacy Township. I'd like to see my kids take advantage of that. So, just to answer your question. Thank you.
Mrs. Buren.
Thank you, John. I was a volunteer Girl Scout troop leader for four years in town. I am an engineer. I work for Zodiac Aerospace where we make emergency evacuation slides and slide rafts that you hope you never have to use in an emergency landing. We design, we test, we pack, and we ship to all over the world, government, military, commercial, and private airlines. And I just want to piggyback a little bit on the previous candidate's answer by saying that I myself went through wood shop and all the trade classes. I pretty much, if you want to say you have a major in high school, I majored in drafting. I took some architecture. But I think, especially in this day and age when everyone is so engrossed in technology and everybody's playing video games and there's no socialization, I think we're missing some key things. You know, you learn a lot of hand-eye coordination in wood shop. It may be a fun class. It may not be something where you have lots of homework and it's not very demanding. But it's also a nice break. And I absolutely would support having more programs like that. And I'm sure my running mate would as well as he owns his own plumbing business. So he actually, he employs some of the students here from the high school. And I know that was one thing that he mentioned at our candidate night with the teachers. So I would absolutely recommend more programs like that. Thank you.
Mr. Claus.
Thanks, John. Again, keep doing that. Appreciate that, John. That's a good question. It's one that I actually was kind of hoping somebody would ask, to be honest with you. As Mr. Panza had mentioned, the OCC Academy that we have, I don't know if you guys are going through it or not, or went through it or in the middle of it or whatever, but to me, that thing, I'm proud of that thing. I want to tell everybody about it. For a junior in high school to be able to start on his college education, and it's not easy, it's a lot of work, but to be able to graduate high school with your associate's degree, I think, is enormous. That helps everybody. Your parents don't have to go pay multi-thousands of dollars for the extra years of school because it's really cost-effective. I paid for a bunch of classes. And now I'm paying for the other classes too, and I don't like that, but it is what it is. Aside from the cost of it, the experience that you get from going through these college classes, you learn how to study as a college student. You find out that you can't study the night before an exam to pass an exam. You've got a couple hours a day, every day, to get through that. So, to me, that's the one that I think is the best. I could go on and on and on about it. We do have 23 kids graduating this year with the possibility of associates, and I can't wait for that day. But aside from that, after-school activities, I think, you know, school ends around 1:30 during the day and there's a lot of time. I remember when I got out at 1:30, I thought like, man, day's over. It's time to go to bed. Can I keep going? Yeah, all right, cool. But the reality is, the days that I went home at 1:30 because we had a snow day or I didn't have practice or something going on, I usually got in trouble for something. So I think the best bet is to keep people busy. So the OCC thing, to me, is huge. And then after-school activities, somebody mentioned the other day to me about a garden club, and I thought, man, we've got tons of room in this, all these properties at every one of our schools. We could have a garden club from kindergarten all the way up through senior year. Something to kind of teach kids, keep them busy and keep them occupied. So I think those are my two answers. Thank you.
Mrs. Buren, your rebuttal time.
Yes. In addition to what I've already stated, I would also like to add that I think it's extremely important for our special needs children that they get also kind of like a vocational sort of room, at least, where they can practice living without their parents. And in addition to that, definitely after-school activities, I'm a very big advocate for environment and eating organic. And I think if we did have a garden club in all the schools, that we would also be able to grow food and donate that to the food pantry in town as well. And it would help the community also. Thank you.
Mr. Sledi.
Thank you. John Hamm, any relation?
No.
You know, you look like him a little bit. You do. I'm sure people tell you that. in this issue, I think Mr. Panza made a great point. It's our job to make you college-prepared, but it's also to make you career-prepared. So college and career preparedness is something that high schools should do. The high school that I attended quite a ways ago was very similar to this school, not by the looks and not by the location, but by the type of kids we had in the school. I know right now we only have about, I think, 60% of kids that go to college, one either is a community college or a four-year university. My high school was similar to that. And we did have all those things. We had metal shop, wood shop. And I know a ton of guys, a ton of men my age, that are very successful in the construction trades, plumbing, electrical, even landscapers. These guys, they never wanted to go to college. That wasn't what they wanted to do. But you know what they wanted to do? They wanted to hustle. They wanted to make money, and they wanted to work. And that's what they did. And they went out and because of classes, like, we had classes in my high school that were three hours long, carpentry, construction. You didn't see those guys. They went in at 8:00 in the morning and they got to lunch. They were in carpentry, construction for three hours. Now, I can't say we could bring that back, you know, but I understand that not everybody wants to go to college, and that's okay. There's plenty of successful people out there that didn't study in a book at a university. There's plenty of people successful in this community. As I look around, many of my friends in this community, successful, and they went to Ocean County VTS Vocational School, I'm sorry. Yes. And there's nothing wrong with that. There is absolutely nothing wrong with that. So it's our job as the Board of Education to steer the people in the direction that want to go to college. That's our guidance department. Our guidance department is supposed to take those kids, they want to go to college, they want to get them in the best colleges that they can, get them accepted into a school, get them accepted into a school that's right for them. And then there's the other guys and girls who don't want to go to college but want to do something, you know, join the military. Some people, you know what? I didn't know what I wanted to do when I left high school. I was just told, you gotta go to college, you gotta go to college. Everybody says that, you gotta go to college. Well, you know what? For 90% of the people, maybe that's the way to go. But the other 10% that couldn't go to college, that, you know, just weren't great students when it came to the books, you know. So something like that, I would support. I would support that no matter what. The other things that I think are important to us, the OCC Academy that Mr. Claus mentioned, that's a great option for anybody. It would lighten the load on your parents to pay for college when you get to the university or college that you choose to go to. I know AP courses are a big thing, exciting a new curriculum we would bring, and also technology classes, excuse me. Other than that, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. DeSenza.
Yes, thank you. There are many Ocean County VOTEC shared time programs and opportunities, perhaps we need to publicize that more to all of the students. VOTEC has many, many programs from cooking to shop, nursing. You can come out of that program, I think, and be an LPN, which is excellent. We're very, very proud of the OCC College Academy Program, which we established in 2016. Allowing our students to get an associate's degree before high school graduation is a huge savings for the parents, and it gives the students a great leap forward in their college career. And we will be graduating, I think, our first graduates this June. We'll be completing the first two-year round of that program. Very anxious to see the graduates in June. We also have a humanities program now established in the high school. Dual enrollment still exists for those that wish to take just a few classes instead of making their whole entire day college courses. And then there's always the advanced placement. And if you score enough on that, you get the three credits, four credits, whatever the course offers. And it gave my son a leap forward. We do have environmental clubs in the elementary schools that were started with grants from the Sustainable Jersey for Schools Program, and gardens have been their projects. But we could have a garden club in the high school. I think that would be a very good thing. We might have had one a long time ago. I'm not sure if I remember a greenhouse here or not, but yes, a garden club is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Trey Kennas will ask the final question.
My name is Trey Kennas. I'm a junior at the high school, and I would just like to ask, what role do you think the Board of Education should play to ensure that the integrity of our school's facilities, such as building maintenance, air conditioning, heating, outdated bathroom facilities, security vestibules, athletic areas, and other issues in order to provide our students with an optimal learning environment?
Mr. Panza.
both of my kids attend Forkett River Elementary School. And unfortunately, the Board went the route of solar panels. So if we wanted to put in air conditioning, I think that ship has sailed and we're kind of locked into the solar panels. So my kid's got to deal with a hot school, you know, or cold, you know. But there's, I look at things a little bit differently than the rest of the candidates up here, especially when it comes, again, to security. And there's things that I'm going to mention in my closing statement that we can do relatively cheaply to do, to make sure that our schools are safe and secure. And why certain things haven't taken place or have been put in place is, I'm not exactly sure. But it's relatively cheap and it would make sure that you guys are safe while you're learning. You guys attend the high school, you have air conditioning and heat and everything else, and that's great. And that's good. But if there's areas of improvement that the Board can afford, you know, I'd take a look at that and take care of it on an as-needed basis.
Mrs. Buren.
Trey, thank you for your question. You know, money is obviously the biggest issue, right, for everybody's requests. And you know, one thing I would really like to propose if elected, and my running mate agrees, is to hire in-house legal counsel. So that we're not, if there is anything that we need legal counsel for, we're not contracting that out. The clock's not ticking every hour. We actually have someone in school, and that's their job, is legal counsel. There's a lot of wasted money right now. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but there's a lot of wasted money on our outside legal counsel. So that's number one. Number two, I also have two children in Forkett River School who deal with the very hot Septembers and Junes, sometimes May. They come home, their faces are flush. There really is only one or two custodians in the building. If a child gets sick, or more than one child at this point in time, we're in flu season, those poor custodians are running all over the place, trying here and there and everywhere. So I recognize that that's an issue, as well as the other facilities that you mentioned. Again, I think we, as Ms. DeSenza said, we need to really rally and start fighting back and pushing back to Trenton on these tax cuts. We need to be the community's voice. And we shouldn't wait necessarily sometimes for you to bring stuff to our attention. We should rally the town ourselves when we think something could be done, and we should take that and run with it. Thank you.
Mr. Claus.
Thanks, Trey. Could you do me a favor? Could you say that question again? I don't think I got the whole thing.
What role do you think the Board of Education should play to ensure that the integrity of our school's facilities, such as building maintenance, air conditioning, heating, bathrooms, security, vestibules, and et cetera? Where do you think the, what role should the Board of Ed play in making sure that these are up to par with other schools, maybe in the county, and help the students with a good learning environment?
Cool. Thank you. So as I mentioned before in my opening comment, the role that the Board of Education takes is more of just an advisory sort of thing. We keep an eye on, I guess, what goes on within the schools. We're not there to do day-to-day type stuff. We've had, actually, over the past couple of years, many conversations about the HVAC, heating, air conditioning stuff. And, you know, we've hired, we brought on an awesome guy who runs the custodians here in the high school, and I think they've been doing a great job. Vestibules, you mentioned that. That's something that we're in the process of doing. That was probably decided on, was decided on a while ago that we wanted to go that route. But the vestibules are basically going to be there to make sure that people can't just come in anymore and, you know, sign in and walk away. The vision is it's going to be something like, you know, an old-school bank where you open up the door, you stick your, you left your book home, you know, you hand it in, close the door, and somebody takes it and gives it to you. So, security, that's huge with us. Some of the things that we're trying to do, though, as far as like maintenance and things like that, or as far as upgrading things, there's been a calling for the past year that I've heard, it's probably been longer, but for a light to be hanging over the wrestling mat. I didn't even know what that really was. Then I watched a couple YouTube videos, and it's pretty cool. So, you know, we've got a donation from the wrestling club for the light, and now we've put together within budget a way to hang that light so that we could have it up before wrestling season. So I'm kind of looking forward to seeing that. Something else, I guess, that we could improve on, though, you had mentioned earlier about the cafeteria, you know, we've got to, if we're going to make improvements, we don't have a lot of money to make them with, so we have to make the right ones. Air conditioning would be a huge cost. I sat in the heat when I was a kid, so you guys can tell. It's only for a couple of days, I guess, right? But anyway, unless it gets real hot, then I guess we've got to shut down school or whatever. But anyway.
Mr. Claus.
Oh, I'm rambling now, aren't I? All right. Sorry about that. That's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Panza, you have one minute of rebuttal time.
Just one thing I want to mention is, something that the school board's not taking advantage of is government surplus. I've been able to save the town that I work for about $100,000 just by obtaining government surplus equipment. So when we're talking about lights over mats and things of that nature, the government is literally getting rid of is literally getting rid of, of tons of this stuff for free, and that would be a cost savings to the taxpayer. Um, as far as security goes, I feel that the school board has been extremely slow in, in dealing with the school security. So based on both of those, those, uh, I just wanted to interject both of those, uh, concepts.
Mrs. Buren, you have one minute of rebuttal time. I would like to note that this is your last rebuttal.
Thank you. So I would also like to mention, on the security standpoint, that I was one of the first parents to request a safety committee be put together, and, uh, I, I did attend the first meeting that was organized last school year. We have requested and have not had any scheduled meeting yet this year. We're already almost through October, two months, and there still hasn't been another follow-up meeting. Um, so safety is definitely a, a huge priority of both Frank Horvath and, and mine. Thank you.
Mr. Sledi, it's your turn to answer the question.
Thank you, and thank you, Trey, for the question. Uh, I, I can say this, uh, three years ago, we hired a new business administrator, his name is Pat DeGeorge, and, and I can tell you that all these things that you mentioned, anything that has to do with building maintenance, uh, it comes under his supervision. And, uh, he's been diligent, uh, in just about everything, every, uh, every complaint he investigates, uh, he attempts to take care of it immediately, uh, as far as just cracks in the sidewalk outside. I, I remember hearing it at a board meeting, that there was cracks in the sidewalk. He was on it the next day.
That was me.
There you go. See that? This was Jean DeSenza. But he, listen, some of these things that you mentioned, like putting air conditioning in Forkett River School, I, I'm for that. I, I don't think in, in the year 2018 that any school shouldn't have air conditioning in it. Should, I mean, it stays now, it stays into the eighties and nineties until October sometimes, you know, and then it starts in, uh, early May. So, you know, putting our kids at risk by being in, in the schools when they're overheated and, uh, you know, it's, it's horrible, it's a horrible learning environment when all you're doing is dealing with just the heat and just trying to stay cool. It's, and I'm sure it's impossible for the teachers as well. It's not safe for them to be working there either. Uh, the, these are major projects that you're talking about, and, uh, we have discussed in finance, uh, concerning financing projects of this nature, uh, you know, I, I do wanna bring up that the, uh, the bond that we had for the, uh, solar panel project, no one's sitting here, previous administration, that, that was done over ten years ago, that project. And, and you know what? Maybe we are paying for it now. At the time, they were sold the bill of goods, and they believed in it, but in that, since that time, I'm just gonna grab a little more time, uh, you know, the SRECs that were estimated are, are now, you know, a twenty percent of the value that they were initially sold, you know, told to us that, that they were gonna be. So, you know what? In hindsight, it was a bad idea, in hindsight, now that we can look back and say, "Hey, you know what? That investment didn't pay off for us." Uh, but to no fault of anybody here. Uh, I wasn't here, I didn't vote for it, you know, it wasn't, I wasn't on the, on the board, Rob wasn't on the board, Regina wasn't on the board. So, uh, are we paying for some past mistakes? A little bit, yeah. Uh, does it eat up a huge chunk of debt? Yes. Regina will tell you all the numbers. Ms. DeSenza will tell you all the numbers, 'cause she has them, and she knows, and she's been diligent on this issue. Uh, but, like I said, no one here is responsible for that, uh, that amazing amount of debt that was put on the school district. And, uh, I believe it'll be paid off eventually, and, you know, when major projects like putting air conditioners in schools, we have to fund that, there may be another bond floated to do that, but that's what has to be done when your budget is as tight as it is, and, uh, the state attacking your budget and taking away. Um, other than that, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. DeSenza?
Thank you. Um, everything that Mr. Sledi said was correct, and unfortunately, long-term capital improvements were put on the back burner for a number of years by the previous board that preceded us, the same one that brought us the solar referendum. However, recently, we've been able to replace the boilers at Lenoka Harbor School, and they were original, and this was done without borrowing. This was done by Mr. DeGeorge, and it was an absolute miracle that we were able to get a little bit of surplus into capital maintenance to replace those boilers, because had they failed in the middle of winter, we would've had seven hundred cold children. It's very unfortunate that an extra eight point two million dollars was borrowed in 2009. We will be paying for that until 2029. The solar bond debt has put this district in the hole until 2029, and that has held back many long-term capital improvements, but we're trying. Air conditioning, unfortunately, is unaffordable and would raise the electric bills. The solar power is only one-third of the district's electricity. For many years, I was hoping that we could get to fifty percent. We joined Sustainable Schools for New Jersey, but we're still unable to reach the fifty percent mark. Forkett River School is the only school that goes one-hundred percent solar at certain times in the summer and when we have bright sunny days. So go Forkett River School, go solar. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will be moving to closing statements. Mr. Panza, you were up first.
I was in the worst possible position tonight. I was candidate number one.
I will agree with you.
So, uh, once again, I'd like to first, uh, thank the Close Up Club and, uh, Mr. Zalinski for hosting, hosting the debate tonight. I'd also like, like to thank the other candidates for showing up this year. Uh, let me start off by saying I'm not a politician. I, I really don't like politics. I don't take political donations, and I'm not politically aligned with any organization. I'm just a guy trying to earn a position on the board to right some wrongs. We all have to look at what the motivating factor is to run for an office that doesn't offer any pay. For me, it's the fact that both of my kids attend the school system here. They didn't graduate years ago, they attend now. So I look at things a lot differently as both a father and as a candidate. Take, for example, school security. Right now, I could walk up and press the button to gain access to a school. The vetting process is, "Welcome to such-and-such school, state your name and purpose for your visit." Once you gain access to the school you are in. There should've been a vestibule area built many years ago when school security was just becoming an issue. This would allow the school to properly vet visitors accessing the school. You have heard or will hear the present board members say they have hired three class, three, or they have hired class-three officers, and that very well may be so. The simple fact is, they have been extremely slow to stay ahead of this issue, and the officers hired should be supplementing an already secured school. Going back just a few years ago, this board voted to lay off armed security that was already in place, a concept I advise against. This is a decision that I fear we may see again with the current board. If I'm elected, once security is in place, it stays. We all met with the teachers' union last week at their monthly meeting. The teachers are one of the lowest paid in the county, they have a starting salary in the mid-forties and twenty steps. It won't, it will not be possible to retain our best, brightest, and most talented teachers as they will look for better-paying jobs in other schools. My question is, if we are one of the lowest-paying school districts, where's the money going? Shouldn't the taxes we pay reflect that? The LTEA is currently in negotiations. Having experience in public-sector contracts, I feel that I would be the best suited to be able to find a contract that would benefit the taxpayers while attracting or keeping our teachers. As a member of the board, I intend to spearhead both of these issues and many others. I'm asking for your trust, your vote, and your confidence, your confidence and your vote on November sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Buren, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. So, a little bit more about me. Uh, when I was in college, I went through a five-year program in four years, so I pushed myself to have eighteen and twenty credits a semester so that I could finish a year early. I really suggest everyone, every student who possibly can take some AP classes, do it. It's excellent. I also want you to know that while I was in college, I was treasurer of the Society of Women Engineers, and then I was vice president, and then president for two years of the Society of Women Engineers. Neither my running mate nor I have any connections that would cause any conflict of interest or force up us to abstain from voting on any matter brought to light to the board. Our priorities will be focused on quality of education, equity of education for all students across our township, active support for our teachers so that we are not known as a stepping sto- a stepping-stone town, district financial responsibility, and encouragement of parent participation in their children's education, which I feel is lacking right now. We intend to address major challenges that the district is facing now and will face, including lowering our operational costs and increasing our revenue in order to bring our teachers' pay up to average, as the previous candidate just mentioned. We would, um, like for everyone to know where their hard-earned tax dollars are going. So, like I said before, full fiscal transparency and accountability is number one for us. Uh, as residents of this great city, you know, we all see the state reductions coming, and we need to do something about it now. We will continually strive for excellence and ask the tough questions and push back to the people at the top in the state, instead of just moving along with anything that's given to us. Quality education for the students here depends on attracting and keeping quality teachers that you guys are familiar with, that maybe you have and maybe your little brother or sister would one day like to have and may not be here in a couple of years from now. We would like to proactively solicit the opinions of the taxpayers, the parents, and the teachers in making board decisions, and to make the board more responsive to community So, we ask for your support. We hope that we can, if elected, help to eliminate the waste, and, um, thank you for your time and attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Claus, your closing statement, please.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thanks again, everybody. This was actually a good time. So, uh, in the past three years, um, as a team, our, our, our board, including our superintendents and, uh, the BA, have made many decisions, uh, that we believe have made a positive impact on our school district. Um, in all honesty, I, I honestly believe that we've got a great Board of Education right now. Um, I, I feel lucky to be here. I feel lucky to be part of it, but I feel lucky to be in Lacy to have people that feel the way we all do about our township, and, um, you know, nobody has an agenda, nobody's beholden to anybody. People make decisions based on what they think is right. And sometimes, sometimes we all agree, sometimes we don't, but we walk out together and we, we go get her done. Um, but anyway, um, these decisions that we make, they've all been, you know, with everybody in mind, the students, the taxpayers, the employees of the district. Um, a couple of decisions that I, I think are great, I mentioned the, uh, in, in education, I mentioned the, the OCC Academy. Uh, I can't say enough good things about it. It's awesome. I can't wait to see, I, I, I think we get to go sit, actually, at OCC when the kids graduate, when they do their walk, so that's gonna be kinda fun. Um, but, uh, they actually graduate a week before at OCC, and then they come and walk at Lacy, so it's kinda backwards, but it's cool. I mentioned a personal example of my son, you know, he got eighteen credits, he walked away with, went to, uh, Purdue out in West Lafayette, and they took every one of his eighteen credits, so it, it's not as difficult as people might think for these things to transfer. Um, we've made improvements to the math department. We're teaching students now, um, we're trying to get more and more into it, too, Algebra I in the eighth-grade level, so that they can come into high school and go right to Algebra II, get into geometry and all that kinda good jazz. We're, we're trying to expose these kids to the, the more, you know, rigor, the higher experienced, uh, type classes earlier in life so that they can, uh, have more time to learn, and, you know, they've got more years in front of them as they're learning, so, um, and with that effect, I, I believe our SAT scores in the park was rising as time went on, too, so. Uh, safety, people talk about safety. Our, we've got five officers now in six schools. We wanted six in six schools, but we didn't have the budget for it. Uh, so we had to negotiate, we had to figure it out, and now, between the two schools that are right next to each other, without saying too much, we've got one guy that floats. Not only are they not going anywhere, but the goal is to have a sixth next year, so that every school has somebody in it. Um, and yes, it is a little too easy to get into the schools these days, but, once we got these vestibules in, damn, I can't use my flag. Uh, budget, real quick, um, we started two years ago, three years ago, seventy-one, uh, seventy-one million, three hundred and three thousand. The year after that, the first year Dave and I were on, we were down almost four million to sixty-seven million. Then we went to sixty-eight million, which is still three million less. Uh, this year, we're back at seventy-one. We apologize, but healthcare and everything kinda killed it for us. That's all I'm allowed to say about that.
Mr. Sledi, your closing statement, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Rob. You're very thorough there. Uh, I would like to thank the Close Up Club, the faculty and staff, and, uh, everybody else that showed up. Thank you for coming. Uh, I gotta be honest with you, I thought there'd be a lot more people here, but maybe they're all watching at home, so, uh, that's okay. Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of hour accomplishments, uh, the boards over the last three years. We reduced the budget two out of the last three years. Uh, we had the introduction of the OCC Academy, uh, which we all know about now, it affords the students the opportunity to, uh, earn a associate's degree before you leave high school, which would be fantastic if you took any of those options. Even if you took a couple of classes, it would really save you in the long run. Uh, introducing the safety initiative, uh, you know, with the increased, uh, increased resource officers at our schools and beefing up the entranceways with the safety vestibules, it's a huge accomplishment. Now, like I said, this is mine and Rob's first term. This is, uh, we're closing up our third year. These initiatives were set a year ago. You know, things don't happen overnight, but these are clearly things that were near and dear to us, and we wanted to get 'em done, uh, and we are getting things done. Nothing would happen in a day. Uh, increased park scores and SAT scores, if you were here the other night when, uh, Dr. Clark gave her, uh, her presentation on, uh, on the, on the students' achievements, that was something that she brought up. You know, I, I'm just gonna go off on a tangent here. I just want you to know that the school board is made up of different people from different walks of life. There, there, you may be just a mom, a stay-at-home mom. You could be a police officer, a firefighter, uh, you could be an IT whiz, you know, you can be a salesperson. There's, every walk of life ends up on the board, educators, huge, huge, uh, that we have an educator on the board. And so, you bring all these people together, and they all have different, different expertises. And when you bring 'em all together, they work as a team, and you use those expert advice from one or the other. You know, where you're deficient in one subject, another person may be an expert in, and, and you talk things through and you work it out. And, uh, like I said, we're just trying to steer the ship. We're steering the ship in the positive direction. We wanna keep it going. If elected to the Board of Ed, uh, or re-elected, I would continue with the initiatives we started. We would spearhead more initiatives, and we would move this district forward. Uh, I, too, have a daughter in the district, and, you know, the, the qualifications for being on the board has nothing to do with whether or not you have a son or a daughter in the school district. It's if you're over eighteen and you're a registered voter and you live in Lacy. Those are the only three things that you have to be in order to be on the Board of Ed. But, to be honest with you, I think we bring a lot of things to the table here, and to be honest with you, some people would ask you for their vote. Uh, I would love your support. I would love you to support me and Rob as running mates, but I'll tell you what, I want you to do your homework. I want you to support who you wanna support. I want you to vote for who you want to vote for, and then sit back and hope that things happen and things move in the right direction. I have no ill will towards anybody running against us. I just wanna wish them all luck and be out there on November sixth and vote. Thank you very much.
Ms. DeSenza, your closing statement, please.
Thank you so much. Um, if elected, what do I hope to change or improve? But it's a few things that I have on my mind, and the one really important thing, in my opinion, is board training. I'd like to encourage other board members and new members to take all the training sessions available to them, attend NJSBA workshop sessions, go above and beyond the required state training, attend county meetings, attend state delegate assembly meetings, meet other board members, and learn from them. Our board needs to do self-evaluations all the time, not just once in a while. It is an NJSBA recommended best practice. The questionnaire alone is very enlightening and gives board members a lot to think about. The school district currently is in need of a new strategic plan. The one the district did in 2015 is now expired, and it's time to update. District goals and board goals go hand-in-hand, and the strategic plan process helps facilitate that. These are things that must be kept up with, and it is a very good reason for the board to have retreats, so these issues can be discussed. Business meetings are so busy with monthly business, the board needs a separate time to convene to discuss general issues, and that is the purpose of retreats. They are not vacations. Many other districts have retreats on a regular basis, and this is what I learned, you know, when I went to Trenton so often. So I would hope to see our board receive more training, improve communication within itself, and improve communication with administration, and whoever needs to see or meet with the board- board. I am the only candidate currently fully certified by the New Jersey School Board Association. I've attended Board Member Academy courses, and I have completed all my credits. Visit my Facebook page for the DeSenza for Lacy School Board, and my credentials are posted there. Please vote for me, and I will be your fiscal watchdog. Don't forget, Election Day is coming up, Tuesday, November 6th, two weeks from today. Thank you, and I hope the students that are over 18 are registered to vote.
Thank you. On behalf of the Close Up Club, we thank you for attending tonight's debate. The event will be aired on Comcast Channel 21 and up until the day of the election, and will be available on youtube.com/wltsTV. For all of you who are at home, please remember to make sure your voice is heard and vote on Tuesday, November 6th. Thank you, and I hope everyone has a safe ride home.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)[1794.83]